Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started. Welcome you all in the snow evening, Tuesday, February 17th, to the City Council Work Session. Thank you all for coming out in the kind of inclement weather. Mr. Shields, you want to go ahead and get started with the first item?
Okay. The first item is Neighborhood Traffic Calming Update. And we actually have a resolution that we would ask the council to put on your agenda for next week to adopt our new Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. Paul Stoddard will give a staff report, and the chairman of the CACT, Paul Baldino, is here to talk about it as well. I, for one, am very excited about this program. I think it clears out some of the kinks that we have in the existing program, and I think follows council's direction. A, to facilitate these neighborhood requests for traffic calming, and B, to explore some lighter solutions that don't cost as much. And so that's formally built into the program as well. And so Paul will give, I think he wants to walk you through just a brief number of slides. We think it'll take just about 10 minutes to sort of set it up, and then take questions from there.
All right. Thank you, White. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So that's why I said this is a presentation in advance of what is scheduled for action next week, an update to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. And so that's why I said I'll walk through, I think it's 12 slides in total, should take me about 10 minutes, and it's going to be a walkthrough sort of the substantive policy issues that are included in the program update. So as always, I'll start off by motivating the work that staff is doing here. Why update the program? First, it's to have a way to better address resident concerns, which primarily revolve around improving neighborhood safety in residential areas. And then, as a side note, there are five pending applications, which sort of emphasizes the need to move through these things a little more quickly. And then, a lot of it is policy cleanup. The last program update was done in November of 2011. And so what's accomplished in this update is updating eligible streets, formalizing how study areas are developed, having a mechanism for prioritizing cases, differentiating between light solutions and heavy solutions, administrative versus public engagement. When can things be handled more quickly through administrative channels? Provide guidance on that. Define the community role. Make sure the community knows their sort of expected involvement in the process. And also describe how to handle requests on streets where different kinds of property involve. Historically, it's only been single-family residential, but now there are cases coming in with multifamily residential, commercial, retail, things like that. With this policy update, this has been an extremely collaborative effort. It's informed by best practices. Literature review was actually conducted by Paul Baldino, the chair of the CACT. He reviewed, it's a pretty meticulous review as well, of Neighborhood Traffic Calming programs in communities around the country that have earned a walk-friendly designation. So these are the sort of communities that know what they're doing and know how to handle these things. We wanted to learn from them. I also conducted phone interviews with staff from surrounding jurisdictions that operate these programs. We engaged stakeholders, the CACT, City Council Planning Commission, and you can see on the right side of the screen, all the work sessions that were involved in getting the draft program to this point. And at each of those work sessions, we were stepping through some of these issues that we knew were shortcomings in the existing program. When I say "we," I mean the CACT and staff here, that we knew were shortcomings in the existing program, and we wanted to address with this update. And so now, I'll sort of walk through, this is the new framework for the program on the right here, sort of a process flow of how this is envisioned to work, beginning with the resident request, identifying study areas by a predetermined method, identifying under policy whether this is something that staff should be handling, or whether it's something that does involve more neighborhood engagement, quickly moving into data collection, and then prioritizing cases, figuring out what neighborhoods have the greatest need, and then determining whether that can be handled through a light solution or a heavy solution. And so in the remaining slides here, I'll just step through some of the key issues in this update. So first, community role. First off is making sure that there's a sufficient showing of sort of neighborhood support for some sort of change before the wheels of the process get started. So putting the petition process up front, instead of leaving it till the very end. And then development of a solution, setting up a working group early on of people who are committed and prepared to work regularly amongst themselves, and to check in with staff as needed, and developing a solution that works for all groups. And then communicating with staff, making sure that early on, the neighborhood amongst themselves picks a representative that is responsible for communicating the decisions of the group, the decisions of the neighborhood up to staff. Updating eligible streets. Currently, there's a bit of a policy gap for some streets. This map on the right, you can see Broad Street and Washington Street are these two streets highlighted in purple. Those are currently not eligible for the program and would remain so. The idea being that those are primarily commercial corridors, they're in the planning opportunity areas, and so design and planning for those streets is happening already. All of the sort of gray streets that are extremely difficult to see in this slide, those are residential streets and would remain eligible for the program. Streets highlighted in green here, as well as this blue color, things like Great Falls, Hillwood, West, Park Avenue, those things are currently not eligible for the program, even though they're primarily residential in nature, they're not classified as residential streets. With this update, that would be changed, and all those streets would now be eligible to apply for Neighborhood Traffic Calming. Looking at the way study areas are formed. Right now, study areas are formed through a collaborative process of, dialogue process of the CACT, the neighborhood, staff. This takes, this adds somewhere between one and two months' delay to the processing of the request. It can also lead to frustration if groups feel that the study areas weren't drawn correctly. And so with the program update, there would be predefined shapes, depending on whether the concern was taken as a mid-block, in which case it includes that block, or whether it's an intersection concern, and then all the legs of the intersection are included. And these shapes could be combined together to encompass all of the concerns brought forward by the residents. Once the study area is defined, it needs to be decided whether this is an administrative problem, or whether it's a public engagement issue, or something to be considered through public engagement. And that is broken down by whether it's a traffic control problem or a traffic calming problem. Traffic control is about assigning right away and making sure that the existing roadway is working safely. Traffic calming is about modifying the roadway and changing the character of the street. So if it is a traffic control issue, that can be handled administratively. If it's a traffic calming problem, we go through the larger public engagement process. Case prioritization. This is something in the existing program, cases are handled first in, first out. That's not going to work as the number of cases continues to grow, as it has in the last year. It also leads to strange situations where everyone may be aware that one case has a greater risk involved, but it has to be at the back of the queue simply because it came in last. So instead, there's a prioritization system in this draft update that tries to prioritize cases that represent the greatest need. Here, greatest need is classified as the greatest risk of a severe pedestrian injury if there is a crash. And a lot of this is based on research that looks at the correlation between impact speed, how fast the motor vehicle is moving, and the risk of a severe injury to a pedestrian that's involved in that collision. And one of the things that comes out in this curve is that it's not a linear relationship. So as impact speed increases, risk of injury increases much faster. And so that's built into the prioritization system. So streets with higher-moving vehicles have a higher risk, all else being equal, and they get prioritized first. Light versus heavy solutions. Right now, the existing program doesn't call for light solutions, things like paint and signage, information, lower-cost solutions that are quicker to implement and easier to change. As a result, as cases coming through, they are sort of biased in favor of heavy solutions, which are these physical changes, things like curb extensions, speed bumps, things like that, which can certainly be effective, but they're not necessarily more effective in all cases. But they are, in all cases, carrying a higher cost, they're slower to implement, and they're difficult to change if the neighborhood doesn't, if it's not working out. And so this program has sort of an emphasis on exploring light solutions before moving on to a heavy installation. And then different property types. This is something that's popped up in a couple of recent cases, and it's not well-defined how to handle it in the current program. There are these sort of multiple groups that are sort of floating around here. You've got property owners and property renters. You've got single-family residents, multifamily residents, large lots, single-family, smaller lots, single-family. Representation, who speaks for a condo association, or a group of townhomes, or an apartment building? And then what happens when you have a street with residential, commercial, and retail users on it? This program update, it's defined more fully in the program document, but to go over it briefly here. Property owners, because they have to deal more often with the long-term impacts, their input is sought. Amongst single-family properties, regardless of whether it's a large lot or a small lot, it's considered to have an equal representation. And then, across different property groups, so whether it's a retail group, or a multifamily, or a single-family, the amount of representation that that group collectively has is based on the street frontage. That's a system that's used in surrounding jurisdictions to try and address these issues of how do you balance inputs. And I'll just walk through it in this particular example. Here, you've got a street with single-family on one side of the block. The other side, it's hard to tell the colors on the big screen, but it's red and orange reflecting retail and multifamily residential. And here, single-family accounts for half of the street frontage, and so it has half of the representation in making a decision. The, oh, and then I'll jump to the next one here. So this is back to my wrap-up here of why update the program. It's an attempt to better address concerns of residents in residential areas, and this is really a policy cleanup of the last updated, last updated program in November 2011. And it looked at a range of issues that are currently sort of under-defined in the existing program, and it looks to clean those up. Now, I'm happy to take your questions. Yes?
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Good work again on this. One question that struck me, when you were talking about the graphic dealing with speed and sort of the rate of injuries, et cetera. Does it factor in anything about the particular street? Because I mean, not all, I'm thinking about, you know, streets that may be residential and are straight versus, you know, have schools nearby them, or some other element that may make speed, you know, different?
Yes.
If that makes sense. Or there's certain aspects of just how the street's constructed, et cetera, where the higher rate of speed on a given street may be worse than, say, a thorough fair where there's no on-street parking and no school, and none of that going on?
So the short answer is yes. It accounts for all the things that you just mentioned, and now I'll sort of talk through the ways that those are considered. So the risk formula that's in the draft program accounts for traffic speed, traffic volume, and it's actually looking at sort of the speed of each individual vehicle traveling down the street. So it's not an average volume and an average speed, it's sort of the cumulative effect. So, and by that, I'll say that sort of a, one of the problems that you'll see a lot of programs rely on, something is called the 85th percentile speed, or the average speed, or something like that. And that has a tendency to mask when you have a small number of vehicles that are traveling at a very dangerous speed. So that's not done here. It's actually looking at vehicle volumes by bins of 5 mile per hour. So it's, I believe it's correctly accounting for speed and volume, that connection there. In terms of design factors, like deficient design factors like sharp turns or limited visibility, that's included. So once volume and speed are accounted for, if a road seems to have a deficient design, it's bumped up above cases at the same scoring.
So if it's got blind turns on it, or it's, there's a school at the end of it?
Yep, it gets a bump. There's also a bump if you're near a pedestrian generator. And those were considered to be commercial areas, schools, parks, transit stops, metro-rail transit stops. There is a map of that in the program, and it ends up impimpicing sort of most of the city. But we still wanted to make it clear that we do expect more pedestrian activity there, so we wanted to give more weight to those cases when we could.
Great. And then, at some point, are we going to talk about funding?
Sure.
Seems like...
Sure. So one of the, I want to go back to a slide, if I could. So this process here, this process flow on the right, it's not that different from what happens today, but it's a little bit better defined in this update. One of the things that happens is that without available funding, even after the neighborhood comes to an agreement right now, there's a long delay between the time the neighborhood makes an agreement and the time sort of funding authorization and the city work plan all sort of co-align, and the solution can be put forward. So one of the things I'll say is that it's important to have some amount of funding available. And if the city's going to use sort of heavy solutions, like the Parker Kent, like the Pennsylvania Avenue, then $200,000 is about the right amount of money per year in order to get two of those cases through. If these light solutions can come online, and a preference for those can be sort of developed, and we can ensure that those are being just as effective as the heavy solutions, then it should be possible to get by with a smaller amount of funding and still have the same effect. So the CACT request that was included in their annual report was $200,000, and I think that's a reasonable request, sort of based on the history of the recent history of the program and the solutions that have been put forward. I think if this light solution can gain some traction, then we may be able to reduce that amount in future years.
So Paul, you mentioned that there's two requests pending essentially right now. What's the demand, though? Are cases sort of getting filtered out because there's just not capacity to handle those, so they sort of get filtered out to begin with? I'm just trying to get a sense of what's the universe of the problem versus we're self-selecting?
Sure. So the, I think a lot of it is self-selection, in the sense that there are two cases that are ongoing now. Parker Kent should go to construction in the spring, and then Pennsylvania Avenue is pending budget approval in order to move forward with construction. There are, in addition to those two that are ongoing, there are five cases that are pending. They have an application submitted, and they're waiting to enter the process. One of the things we learned in, through the current program is you can't let all the cases in, otherwise, no one moves forward. And so we had to prioritize that, and a lot of the two that are in there to get through and get finished before we take on new ones. So there are five with submitted applications that are waiting to enter the process. And then, in addition, there are somewhere between seven and eight neighborhoods that I had heard from in the last eight months, and I've never heard from them again. And I think part of that is because when I have that initial conversation with them and let them know that it could be three or four years to get a solution, that tends to sort of turn them off.
How do I want to put this? I mean, $200,000 a year sort of seems reasonable if we had started with that, and we hadn't sort of not done projects for a while. But I think that there's outstanding need, and there's going to be more demand coming up, especially, you know, with some projects that we're hearing about coming possibly forward, one application that's going to be before us on a mixed-use, and one that could be several down, years down the line. I think it would be helpful to kind of get, you know, where we're at, like in a five-year CIP, if we were going to do this, are we meeting the funding or not? That doesn't necessarily mean, you know, if you come back with a huge request, that it's going to get approved, but, you know, we just need to know where it falls. What I'm looking for is sort of where's the need, and then what's affordability? I don't want to sort of say, you know, the governor's, you know, 200, but then find out really the need is something larger than that, and we haven't done any planning work about how we're going to need to meet that. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
And there may be multiple ways of dealing with that?
Sure.
And that could happen through voluntary concessions. If we know that there's going to be burdens, we may need to push harder on getting voluntary concessions where we know it's an impact, et cetera. So, but we're not going to be able to do that without knowing what the magnitude is of various issues that can be coming down the line.
Sure. What I hear you asking for is sort of a look at sort of the pent-up demand or the latent demand, sort of what's not visible because the program hasn't done anything in a while.
Exactly. So the universe, and then we'll look at affordability.
Can I just add to that, that you should also capture, if you can, the ongoing operating need for staff to manage this? It's not just funding?
Yeah, and that, thank you, Karen. That's, yeah, absolutely.
Other questions? Ms. Conley?
Thank you very much, Paul. I have two questions. One is, one of the cases that you looked at back in September was the Greenway Downs neighborhood near TJ. And that one did not go forward?
Correct.
Right. So, but the reason it didn't go forward, the people on the one street were all on board with the problem. And then, the city expanded the study area because it was really a neighborhood problem, and then everybody else didn't quite get on board because they didn't understand what was going on, basically. So when the time came for them to show up at the CACT, they didn't have enough people, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And then it also became a school transportation problem. I'm just wondering how that kind of situation fits in with this new plan?
So that problem, that case ran into sort of two sort of problems that are both addressed by the updated program. First is sort of community role and identifying sufficient support sort of in the petition process before it gets to one of those opportunities where it might get tossed out. And the second is in how the study areas are defined. You're right that the initial request came in, and it was for West Cameron.
Cameron, yeah.
Yep. And so the CACT, there's guidance in the existing program that says, look at the entire neighborhood and make sure sort of related effects are accounted for. And in the review, the CACT and the staff agreed as well that West Cameron was really the same in terms of geometry and connections as all the other streets in the Greenway Downs neighborhood. And so, at that time, the study bound, the study area was determined to include all those streets. Unfortunately, as we know from previous cases, unless there's sort of a champion within the neighborhood pushing people to get out to the meeting, they don't know about it, or they've got other things, or they can't make it, whatever reason, and so there was a cut point of a minimum percentage of 25% of households had to be represented at the meeting. They had fewer than that, and the existing program says at that point, if you don't make that threshold, you're out. Now, as the new program comes through, they would certainly be welcome to reapply, and I can reach out to the requester and let her know when the program gets approved, ask her to come back in if she's willing, and then the study areas would be defined such that it would end up being limited to just her block, and they would be able to come in again.
Okay. But what about the concern that that truly is a neighborhood program?
So that's one of the things we hemmed and hawed about when we are defining these sort of, these study areas in this way. Then, on the one hand, if you draw the areas too small, what you end up with is just pushing the problem onto the next street. If you draw them too large, then you end up with the Greenway Downs problem, which is it can't go forward because it's intractable. And so the idea in drawing these was that when people come in, we'll ask them if they've reached out to their neighborhood, to their neighbors, and we can make the study area as big as we need to with these predefined shapes, based on the number of sort of requests we're getting. But ultimately, if it looks like there's really only sort of neighborhood support and neighborhood consensus for moving forward with one thing, as represented by petitions, then we just move forward with that smaller study area. And if that, in turn, encourages the next neighborhood over to do something, well, that's okay, too, because we've already got sort of a predefined solution, we've gone through the data gathering stage, so it should sort of accelerate that next request.
I guess my concern with that process is that if you fix Cameron Road, then, as you said, then Greenway becomes a problem, and they didn't even know they had a problem until the problem was created by the Cameron problem. And then they have to go through two years, or however many years it takes, for their problem to be addressed. So that's my concern with thinking about it that way. I wish there was a way to say, this whole neighborhood really does need to be addressed all at once, and we need to either do better outreach to the people on the streets so that every street is indeed involved, or we need to tell them this is what's going to happen, and, do you know what, do you understand what I'm saying?
That's, I...
I just don't want to cause more problems by fixing one problem, and I know you don't either.
Right. Yeah, that was, well, that was one of the things we looked at, is, because the defining of the study areas is very difficult, and it's critical to have the definition of the study area early in order to accelerate the process beyond what it is today. And so if we're looking at having something like a three-month or a six-month turnaround time, one sort of a case gets priority. If we're adding a one-month, or a two-month, or even a three-month delay to properly define the study area, we're substantially increasing the time to delivery. In terms of how to define the neighborhoods, that's something we really struggled with, whether they should be these sort of, sort of precast sort of pieces that you fit, or whether we should even go ahead and just predefined the neighborhoods within the city and say, okay, here's a neighborhood, here's a neighborhood, here's a neighborhood. And we realized it was going to be too difficult to define those neighborhood boundaries within this program update, that there was going to be a lot of politics involved in that, and potentially a lot of hurt feelings when people felt they were part of one neighborhood, and now it turns out they're not. And so we decided that this sort of variable approach was going to be faster, and that sort of the potential for having some increased problems on neighboring streets was sort of the lesser of evils.
I think if there was like a step two in your chart, your flow chart there? If there was a, right there, where you have neighborhood petition and working group? If there was like a little step to be there, or something that says outreach to larger neighborhood if indeed conditions require that? I don't know.
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that. I would think we would want to do it earlier in the process even, that it's when that study area is being determined.
Study area.
Yeah.
Because if I, if I live on Greenway, and I hear, they say, we're going to fix Cameron, and I say, well, that doesn't really matter, and then all of a sudden, I hear, well, they're fixing Cameron, and that's going to affect you, then I would be annoyed.
Sure. Yep, absolutely.
And then I just have one more question about light versus heavy solutions. Obviously, light will cost less, but on Parker Kent, where we have light in place now, does that seem to be working?
I've heard good things about it. I know there was, the community was really appreciative when that went through, so good, good recommendation, council member, thank you. The community certainly appreciated and liked having something there in advance. I've heard some concerns about the way they're drawn, and that's something that's going to be addressed when we go in with the concrete. We haven't gone out and assessed how things have changed in advance of installing the concrete. But that's something we should be able to do if we wanted to make that a priority.
I'm just always amazed, when I drive past it, how visually it really does change the way that street flows. And I don't know if others drive on that street a lot, but it really, just those painted lines and that light solution make, seem to make a big difference.
Yep.
As a driver.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Seay?
Thank you, Mayor. I am glad that on page 13, you've made very salient the effect of automobile speed, that there's a huge difference between 25 miles an hour and 20 miles an hour with respect to critical injuries, and that the risk of severe injury is less than 15% at that small reduction in speed. And I wish more people knew about that. It would, I think, help us in any attempt to have control over what the vehicle speeds on the roadways are. I really have to applaud that all this work that has been put into this. I know it's at the beginning of a journey, there are just so many things you want to do, and of course, you can't do everything, and then so to bring a product forward, even at this juncture, less than a year after beginning of the study, I have to hand it to you and Chairman Paul Baldino. You guys have done a lot of research. You've identified many best practices, and I hope we have a chance to put them into play. So you've got 200K in the draft CIP, and I'll definitely support that, and we'll see whether that's enough. I do have kind of a, maybe a teaser policy question. You know, we call this Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, and then you've introduced administrative versus work group approaches, and then you talk about traffic control as well as traffic calming. So I'm just wondering, are you putting your hands around a larger box of, are you playing in a larger sandbox with more tools at your disposal? And if that's so, then are you then going to enter into the realm of treating lights, other kinds of things as part of a traffic control approach to calming? Or is that something that you haven't really thought about yet? Maybe the question goes to not just you, but also Paul. While you're mulling that, the answer to that question, I do have another question, which is that you've talked about, and now putting Park Avenue into play here. You said, I think, if I remember correctly, that before, even if you identified a place like Park, but it's a mixed-use as having a problem, you couldn't be part of this program, and now you can. So that begs the next logical question, which is that if, for example, some other body like the EDA, or other citizens, or commercial and commercial on Broad Street begin a campaign to talk about mid-block crossings and those kinds of things, is that the kind of issue that you think the citizens, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, CACT, should be involved in? And if so, to what extent? Got that?
Yep.
Okay, answer.
So I want to go back to the first thing, and that is that I want to make sure the CACT gets their sort of sufficient credit for this program update. They were, right, the CACT, as all boards and commission members are volunteers, and they were putting in a lot of hours in addition to their other responsibilities in order to make this thing happen. So it was a lot of late-night meetings with that group, and I really appreciate them sticking through. sticking through the process. Second, on the issue of traffic control and whether sort of this is expanding the sandbox, as you said, I think it's the same size sandbox. We're just explaining sort of where people are supposed to be playing within it, that what happens today is that a request comes in, and it's not real clear. It seems sometimes like, well, this is something the staff ought to be able to handle, but there's no guidance in the existing program for that. And so this just specifies when it's a traffic control issue, staff's going to handle that, and we're going to take care of it quickly. When it's a traffic calming issue, more about neighborhood character, well, we're going to involve the neighborhood in that, because the neighborhood really ought to be the one sort of defining neighborhood character. So it's specifying sort of where those two things fall. On the issue of Park Avenue, I would think that there are certainly parts of Park Avenue that are more residential, and that's where I would expect more of these traffic calming requests to come from. The other sections of Park Avenue, say that the block in between the grocer and the Kaiser Garage, that would be eligible under this program, but as you note, it's also in one of the POAs, the Planning Opportunity Areas. And so these Planning Opportunity Areas are sort of a center of planning activity, whether it's the Planning Division and the Small Area Plans, or whether it's the Neighborhood Traffic Calming, or whether it's the EDA. There are lots of groups that are involved in these things, and I think that those would end up being a collaboration among multiple groups. There is, in the definition of all the sort of designs that come out, in addition to the neighborhood having a say, staff also has a say, and that's to make sure that it's cost-effective and efficient and fair, but also to make sure that it aligns with any other planning efforts that are going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got a question or two for you. So on Parker and Kent, you striped the area for, I don't know, maybe it's been, has it been a year, or am I just confused as to time?
Beginning of the school year, so it was August.
Okay. And so how has that worked? And it's going to, basically going back to Mary Beth's question, has that calmed traffic? Is it required to have concrete curb to truly do that, or are the stripes itself enough? Have we learned anything from that?
Well, that's what we're going to, as I mentioned to Councilmember Connolly, we need to go out and actually measure what's going on, and we certainly want to do that before the concrete gets poured.
So you don't have, I guess the bottom line is you don't have any information?
Not at this time, no.
How about you, Mr. Shields? You live there. Do you have any thoughts, any anecdotal thoughts about how things are working?
I've absented myself from the whole discussion, partly just because we're going to spend some money right in front of my house, and so I've tried to just stay out of the whole thing.
Fair enough. So how are you going to study the effects? Do you put down little cords to see how fast people are going? Is that basically the information you're going to obtain?
Yeah, that's the information we usually gather, the little strips that lay across the street, and they count not only the number of vehicles that go across, but also the speed of the vehicles that go across. And so we can use that data compared to what was gathered before any intervention was done, and then we can also plug it into the various risk formulas that we've been generating and see what the conditions look like. And this will actually be a really nice case to actually proceed with construction after we do that data gathering, because then we can have three points, sort of no intervention, light intervention, heavy intervention. It's sort of a rare opportunity to do that kind of an experiment in a real-world setting.
So how long are you going to study the kind of interim solution? How much data are you going to get from that?
We typically grab somewhere between three and four days' worth of traffic speeds in volume.
It seems to me that's critically important, because if it turns out the light solution works 80% as well as the heavy solution, but costs 10% as much, then maybe we can do, you know, five times as much on the same dollar and maybe not get 100% solution, but you get as, at least as an interim measure, pretty good bang for your buck.
Agreed.
And so is it possible that, for example, if this is, the light solution works pretty well, that that may be used more extensively, and that may be kind of a model to do a study on an interim basis to see whether it's effective, and then if it's not effective, go to the heavy solution if it is effective, maybe stop there?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think visually, it looks like it chokes it up pretty well. When I see it, I think it looks pretty good. I think frankly, it would look great with concrete as well, maybe some street trees. Are any street trees planned for?
That was discussed with the neighborhood. One of the things that these Neighborhood Traffic Calming Programs have is that they have, they have benefits for the entire block, but the sort of costs, the ongoing costs tend to be most associated with the adjacent property owners. So if there's landscaping put in in the residential neighborhoods, we ask the neighboring property owners to care for that. And so we gave, we allowed the neighboring property owners to declare what they wanted the landscaping to be. In this case, it's going to be grass sod to match what's adjacent to it. And we said over and again that if you want to come in and replace it with anything, you can do that. The only concern we have on the staff side is visibility. So making sure that if there's planting put in, they stay below a certain height, or if there are trees put in, they would have to be located in the right spots.
It seems to me that that necessarily ought to be a decision of the neighboring property, whether they have street trees, for example, in public areas, maybe that ought to be consideration, but throwing out the deciding factor, whether we want to put street trees, you know, within these new areas we built out, just for, that's my own two cents. I don't know if anybody else agrees, but I think that we ought to have a broader community interest in street trees than just what the guy who immediately, immediate neighbor wants.
So it's, I may have mischaracterized it, but a lot of this sort of getting the sort of neighborhood to a consensus on a design has to do a lot with making sure that everyone's benefiting and paying equally in the sense of their ongoing sort of interaction with the neighborhood. And sometimes people's sort of decisions to go along with the neighborhood sort of idea are predicated on certain design impacts. For example, on Pennsylvania Avenue, one of the big concerns was preservation of a tupelo tree. There's a mature tree. Preservation of trees is important for the city, particularly for a few residents on that street. And so without a design that preserved that tupelo tree, it wasn't going to go forward. And so sometimes the landscaping decisions may seem like you could just pluck those out, but if you begin sort of pulling it apart, you end up unraveling the neighborhood agreement.
I got you on taking down a tree, but adding a tree to me, doesn't seem like that would be, most people do like street trees, and I think that's a goal as a community we ought to have, is to increase the number of street trees. Frankly, we don't have as many, I think, as we should, given our Tree City designation. Are there any other questions or comments? Before we leave, I'd like to say you guys are doing a great job. You know, I know it's really hard to work with all these folks who come in with different interests or worked up about, you know, safety in their neighborhood, and rightfully so. You've got kids in the neighborhood, so you guys are doing a great job. Keep up the good work, and thank you for coming out tonight.
All right. Thank you.
So we're, council is ready for this to be on the agenda at your meeting next week?
I think so. Any objection? I think so.
I think that's good. We'll follow up on that one suggestion on the flow chart. I do think we need some internal discussion on that, but we will follow up with council and just make sure that that's-
Can I just say one more thing on that? Maybe part of the thing with that neighborhood is that it, because a lot of that traffic is school-related, maybe that needs to be in the flow chart, is, is this neighborhood traffic problem caused by, you know, because it's specific times of the day, it was the Cameron Road people, Jody knows, it was the Cameron Road people who said in the morning, when people are coming from the east side of Falls Church, that's the quickest way to get their kids to daycare and to band is that way, and then the quickest way to get out is to go up Marshall or George Mason. So it's mostly school-related problems. So maybe that has to be the caveat in the flow chart, is, is this situation specifically at certain times of day, or commuter traffic, or school traffic? Because then that situation could be solved by working closely with the school and monitoring, you know, talking to parents directly, since they're the ones that are causing the problem.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can look into.
Although at the public hearing, we heard from the neighbors that it was all kinds of traffic, not just school. I think one of the ways we can address the issue you bring up is when we are initially informed of the case, is to encourage them to get with the neighbors. And one of the things that really is different about the new program, and the example that we brought up, was that whole effort was started with one individual filling out a one-page form, and it generated months of staff work. And she was, and she was a great, great lady who would have done anything we asked, within reason. There was no encouragement in the program for her to contact the other neighbors on the adjoining streets. And now we require 51% of the affected neighbors in order to even consider the valid application. And then even after we accept it as an application, the working group forms, a representative is established, and they are expected to reach out to their neighbors and with guidance from staff, come up with some recommended solutions. So I think the seeds of solution are already there, and it's a fairly easy adjustment.
If we could, I think it'd be great for you all to come back at a set period of time, let us know what happened to Parker Kent. In other words, like, this is what it was before, this was the light solution, this is what came out, and this is a heavy solution, and here's what came out, so we can help do some analysis. I think that informs our CIP decisions, how much money you need a year, based on what kind of bang you're getting for the buck, and do we need the heavy solution everywhere, or do we, can we get through something in the middle? And just sort of keep us updated how things are going. I think this is becoming a bigger and bigger concern with the community. I certainly hear a fair amount about it. People are concerned about traffic and traffic speed in the neighborhoods, so, but thank you, I know it's a thankless task, so let me thank you for all your good work. And unless there's anything else, why don't we move on to the next item?
All right. Thank you, Paul. Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So our Treasurer, Judy Acosta, and CFO will join us for the next item.
You're Mr. Weir? She was good? No matter what.
Right here, please. So the city has approximately $13 million in undesignated fund balance, which is 17% of our annual expenditures, and we also have capital reserves, and they are currently invested in the local government investment pool, which is, maintains liquidity and safety of principal. And we want to present the council with another option, which would produce a higher yield. That's also, would be a safe harbor for the city's reserve funds. And the Treasurer is responsible for the city's investments, and so I'll let her provide the staff report.
All right, great. Does this on? You have before you the staff report, hopefully you've looked at it. This Virginia Investment Pool, or VIP for short, was established in late 2013. It was, it's put together by VML, VACO, as an option to LGIP. The terms are a little bit longer terms, they're looking, you know, one to five years is the stuff that they're investing in, so they're able to pay a little bit more. It's not as liquid as LGIP. LGIP is like immediate liquidity at all times, which is one of the reasons why it doesn't, you know, return as much. This would be, you'd have to give them two weeks' notice to withdraw from the VIP fund. It was created under the Joint Exercise in Powers ordinance, or under the state code, so that all the localities can participate in it. They've got an AG opinion, it's legal. In order to participate in it, you have to pass an ordinance, you have to pass a local ordinance saying that you're allowed to participate in it. So that's what, that's what this would be, the ordinance. It's established as a government trust fund under IRS Code, Section 115. It's a, it does have a minimum initial contribution of $75,000. Additional contributions have to be 10,000 increments, minimum redemption is $10,000. It's, right now, it's paying like, the yield is .77%, and LGIP is .100%. As the interest rates go up, as everyone's expecting them to do this year, you know, we think it'll get even better. But their benchmark is the Bank of America Merrill Lynch one-to-three-year corporate bonds, and they're doing better than that. Their goal is to perform better than that, so, and they are, a little bit. As you probably know, we're, you know, localities in Virginia are very limited in what they can invest in, and this meets all those requirements, the things that they're invested in. The bond ratings are double A or better, double A and triple A bonds. Right now, they've got about 40% of the fund overall invested in corporate notes and bonds, and about 20% in US Treasury bonds. Right now, the fund is at about $155 million. Fairfax County's invested $50 million, Arlington County's invested $40 million. So they're probably the two biggest stakeholders. The Board of Directors are, Arlington and Fairfax are both on the Board of Directors. But they're all local, you know, localities, local treasurers. Virginia Beach is in it, Roanoke, Chesterfields. So it's very safe, and it pays a higher rate of return. It's not the instant liquidity of LGIP. It's just another option for us. And Richard and I have talked about it, we probably put in initially at least $5 million, maybe 10. So we're still looking at that.
And the beauty of VML, if I can add, is they have loan programs which could help us in dealing with some of our equipment and vehicle issues.
That we otherwise couldn't borrow from them, you mean? Unless we invested in the pool?
What's the interest rate to borrow from them?
Well, it's competitive. They don't specify what it is, but it allows you to do short-term borrowing that you wouldn't do with a bond, all right? And since we are dealing with vehicles, it would help us to avoid having to deal with how we finance the bond to make sure that the vehicles are paid off within five years, right? So that would be the beauty of dealing with them. They do have a lease program also that we could look at for some of our vehicles.
So what is that, what's the delta or the gain between the two interest rates if we invested 10 million per year?
F of percent.
So Richard, help me with the math.
But you're only, you're only getting .1% on $10 million.
I know, I'm trying to figure out.
On 10 million, if you had 10 million in VIP, you know, you'd earn $77,000 versus, you know, what, 10,000 or something from LGIP in the same amount?
Not much.
It's not a game changer, but this is a particularly low interest rate environment.
No, what I'm trying to factor out is, you know, risk versus benefit analysis, so doesn't sound like there's much upside, and what's the downside then?
I think there's upside. I mean, it depends how much we put in there, but if, for example, how much, what's our total cash situation right now? How much do we have in cash sitting around at .1%?
In LGIP.
No, no, right now. Yeah, wherever, wherever we got it.
27 million or something.
So we have $27 million essentially earning no interest right now. And .110% is not much interest. And this seems to me to be a highly secure vehicle. And tell me if I'm wrong, but a highly secure vehicle, and if we were to be able to get, particularly since we can get it out in two weeks, I mean, there's almost no expense that you have to pay this second, that can't wait for end of the month of 30-day billing. And so I suspect you could put a pretty good amount in here, not 10 million, but more, if you chose to, because you can get it out in two weeks' notice, and you also get a loan if you need to get something out tomorrow.
And so I'm not debating that, I'm just trying to get a sense of, how much more risk are we taking, if any?
There is no more risk.
No.
All right. The only difference is in liquidity and the fact that you can get, you can buy longer-term investment vehicles with VML than you can with LGIP.
So when you say longer-term, are you talking, right now, we're looking at essentially a money market-type account, it's .77. Is there also other vehicles you could use that would have longer term?
There are corporate, the corporate bonds can be invested for longer term.
So for example, this would essentially give us more tools in our arsenal to get a higher return on this big pot of cash we have.
Exactly, yeah.
Whether we utilize it or not is a second, secondary question, or if so, how much. But the fact that we would have more options than we have right now, which are very limited. Essentially, right now, we have a 10th of 1%, which on $27 million is not much.
And who manages it? Like, how much we're invested in? Because right now, it's just one fund essentially that we're in, right? So now we're looking at two.
Right.
Who manages how much we have in each fund and how that's, because I know that the money moves around quite a bit, just because of, you know, how we pay and how we earn receipts. Look, I'm going to be frank, this adds a slight layer of complexity, and we know based on our audit that we had some, you know, challenges just because of our size, and now we're looking at, you know, for the tune of $3,000 or $4,000 more, adding a layer of complexity to the, you know, to the issue. And we know we already have some challenges in some of the oversight functions that came out in the audit report. So I don't want to add more pressure on staff for a return of $3,000.
Well, we wouldn't be here if it added more pressure, believe me. However, they do have, I mean, it is made up of municipalities, they do have investment specialists that manage the fund for everyone, very similar to what LGIP does. Again, the difference is that you get to invest in a broader variety of vehicles, you can invest money long-term for- For instance, you folks have established the Capital Reserve Fund. Right now, that's sitting in LGIP, you're earning .1. If you knew that you were going to set aside money for some event in the future, and you weren't going to be touching the money, wouldn't it be better to invest it in a longer-term, higher-paying vehicle? That's why we're bringing this to you.
The fund is, if I could add, the financial manager is the VML-VACO financial advisor.
I wasn't asking about how they manage the money. I was more like, are we going to have enough internal controls, given that there's going to be essentially two pots of money that we're putting into out of? I mean, I can always bring it down to like my basic level. When I have one checking account, life is a lot easier than when I have two. And I'm trying to manage that.
We manage a bunch of them. And again, adding another account such as this one is not going to create any burden.
Great.
Mr. Z?
Thank you. I'm always looking out for staff on that front.
Like I said, we would not, we would not be coming forward with this if we didn't.
I didn't, I didn't think so.
We're going to be burdensome, yeah.
I would be doing my job if I didn't ask.
I was going to say, I have at least three checking accounts, is mine, hers, and ours. That seems to work out a whole lot better than, anyway, I digress. Can you do interim fund transfers, moving between different instruments while it's invested in this larger pool without cost? Or do you pay a transaction cost?
Within the VIP, you mean?
Yes.
No, we just would be invested in the pool.
You mean between LGIP and VIP is the transaction?
Well, if you're invested in, in say, short-term money market, and then, for example, you see an advantage to invest in a year and a half or three-year instrument, can you do that without incurring a cost?
Well, we're just invested in the pool, so we don't, you know, it's not like we tell them what to invest in when it's in the pool.
But I think Dan was getting to the comment, I think I just heard, which is there are multiple instruments or length, terms we could get into. So I think Dan's question is probably, if we got out of the pool and got into a longer-term instrument, let's say five-year instrument, because we knew we weren't going to spend a certain amount of money for five years, yet would obtain a higher yield, is there any transaction costs associated with switching between?
No.
Did I ask you a question?
Oh, I couldn't ask that question. No wonder my financial advisors don't talk the same way. All right, so given that, you mentioned that Arlington and Fairfax are probably the biggest investors in this, and so when you're saying that we are looking at five to 10 million of a potential 27 to 30 million pool, which represents maybe, you know, a third, more or less, of our liquid assets, they're now sitting in this one place, why don't we move to somewhere else? How much of the liquidity of Arlington, Fairfax have they invested in this pool? Have you, have you looked at that question? Would it represent 30% as well of their liquid assets?
No, it would be less than that. It would probably be more like 10 to 15.
Okay.
I could follow up on that question. What do they do with the other 90% of their liquid assets?
Their treasurer's office, they have a deputy finance director, John Tuie, and he invests it, and he manages it.
But so what are they invested in?
They invest, they're in CDs, they're in some corporate bonds themselves, you know, they have that expertise, so.
So basically, they don't invest money, they're giant pot of liquid assets in .1 returning, likely in .1 returning instruments. They may not use a pool because they have more expertise, so they feel they can directly invest in a great corporate bond, a great treasury, or whatever it is, they'll ladder it out internally, because they have the in-house expertise to do that. But nonetheless, they're not satisfied with a big pot of money sitting around earning a tenth of a percent. Is that fair to say?
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay. I mean, to me, I feel the same way, and this is why I brought this up at some of our meetings, that I feel like it's a missed opportunity, even though it may be right now. I don't think it's a couple thousand dollars. If you're talking about a heavy investment in this, you may be talking about 100 grand a year. For example, 15 million might generate you, generate 100,000 dollars a year, which is a school bus. It's not just a school bus for this year, it's a school bus for every year in perpetuity that we might not have, which counts. It matters, you know, we're going to be fighting over, I imagine, a small amount of money in the coming months, because it's important in a small little place like this. And to me, we ought to earn every penny we can, just like in our households. We're trying to squeeze every penny we can, and we're going to put it in that high-yield money market, if we can get into it with the right bank or whatever. And so I think this is a very good idea to be doing. I'd like to have the input maybe of the retirement board, if they have the expertise, to offer their thoughts on it as well, since they do money management essentially as an advisory board for us. But to me, I think, taking the first step in this, and we don't have to put the money in, right? The ordinance is just allowing us to put the money in if we choose to, and you could come back to us and bring some options to us. For example, maybe we can ladder some of it if we, five years out, two years out, we get this kind of yield if we agree to put it in for this amount of time, this kind of instrument. So we can have that further discussion. This is the first step of just whether we can authorize the action, not necessarily taking the action. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your recommendation as staff or treasurer, et cetera, is to?
To approve the ordinance.
Okay.
And the other thing I will tell you about the Arlington County, I just happen to know, they're making between, you know, .75% and .80%. They're not invested in anything really long-term, so they're doing about the same as, as the VIP, as the Virginia Investment Pool.
Okay. But so then, they don't put their money in the other pool, the .10, right? They don't have their money stacked up in that?
No, not at all.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments, questions?
They have money in LGIP, but it's not, most of it is not.
But not big chunks of it, just their operating cash.
Ms. Conley?
So, Ms. Acosta, my question, you mentioned that Arlington and Fairfax have people on the board?
They do.
Who else is on that board? And how does that work?
I actually have a list, let's see. So the board's elected from the localities that invest.
Okay.
And they do have two seats reserved for localities with populations of 75,000 or less. City of Alexandria is on it, City of Chesapeake, City of Roanoke, Arlington County, Fairfax County, City of Virginia Beach, Washington County, which is down there, Abingdon, almost in Tennessee, Town of Haymarket, Christiansburg, Town of Vinton. And then the two ex-officio members are, one's from VML and one's from VACO.
And what does the board decide? Is invested, how it's invested?
No, this sort of oversight, you know, no, they don't decide how it's invested. That's done with the, with the fund. Public Advisors Trust or something is the managing, the company that manages the fund.
So if we were to invest in this, would this be something that we would like to eventually have someone on that board?
It would be my goal to get on that board.
And that would be you, the treasurer, would do that?
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Z?
Thank you. I really liked this, and I'm glad that you began the discussion here and that staff has been so agile in following up with this. Are there other instruments like this?
Not that I'm aware of. This is, and this is relatively new.
No one's buying oil exploration hedge funds?
Yeah, just provide me with more staff and we'll manage it for you. I mean, that's the issue, the larger municipalities, they can invest in these pooled efforts like LGIP and VML, but they can also manage their own assets. We are not there yet.
All right.
Any other comments, questions? If not, is there a feeling that we should continue with this? Any objections to this ordinance? Ms. Oliver?
One point of clarification. The ordinance sets up, gives us the ability to participate in the fund. And if I'm reading it properly, then it is up to you to determine how much you put in there.
Right. You know, along with our finance director, yes. But in Virginia way, the code's written, it is the treasurer that's responsible for the investments, so.
So it would not naturally come back to council for a second look? If we pass this, it would then be your?
That's true. That's true.
I guess I would, my hope would be that we would have that initial discussion, because this would be the first time we're doing this. It's not an established policy. And so I would hope and ask that after the ordinance is passed, we have some discussion or some recommendations from you to come back to council, and then we can have this discussion about, you know, at least give you some guidance of what we think maybe the appropriate mix might be, or what our goals are, what our longer-term goals, so that we can start getting, and maybe you could bring some more information to us as well, as to what are some longer-term instruments, and what are they, you know, is it worth it? Do you want to go five years out to get an extra percent?
Right.
Probably not worth it, but maybe. And so I guess I'd like some more information about longer-term instruments, some recommendations, maybe a high-low recommendation of what we would invest, and then just how that portfolio might look. But it seems to me that if we do this right, we may be able to generate 100,000 dollars worth of interest that we wouldn't be getting otherwise. And again, that's a school bus, and we're going to be talking about a school bus, I guarantee you, in the next two months. And I'd love to be able to say it's a painless way to give that school bus and do it every single year. So I think this is a good idea. This is how I want to manage my home finances and how I try to, and that's what I'd like the city to do as well.
Okay, yeah, great.
So thank you all for coming back to us with this information. Unless there's anything else, I wish you a good night, and again, thanks much for all your good work.
Thank you.
I'll just note also, historically, if I'm thinking back in like 2003 or so, we had $600,000 of revenue from investment returns. And so it used to be a much more significant part of a revenue stream. And eventually, we'll get back to that.
It'll be that. If you've got 25 million bucks, the days of, you know, 3% or 5% are coming, and that's a lot of money. So thanks again. All right, council member comments? Is there any council member comments? Okay, what's up?
I just want to note that a longtime member of the Falls Church community, Cindy Elkin, passed away last week. Cindy and her husband were the owners of Point of View. Thank you, Point of View Eyewear. And she was a longtime member of the Chamber of Commerce in the community. She lived in Great Falls. We haven't seen her around Falls Church in a while, but from my perspective in the schools, she was always very supportive of the schools, and I know that she also was real supportive of the business community. So my condolences to her family. Her viewing is, well, right now, at Murphy's, and the funeral is later this week. I don't know when. And then my other thing is, I sent an invitation to everyone for Thursday, March 5th, to come to a celebration at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School to celebrate visionaries in the Falls Church community, who were important in the founding of the daycare program, which is celebrating its 40th anniversary, and the IB program, which is around 30 years. And as part of this program, I have been interviewing the people who founded these things, these two programs, and it's fascinating to hear people talk about how they, as citizens, decided, we really need to make a change here, and the citizens brought it to the staff, and the citizens and staff worked together and came up with these good programs, so worth attending. So I hope everyone can come to that one.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Shields, I think they're having some kind of flag ceremony up at Eden Center on Thursday. Are you aware of that?
I am not.
If you could, I think they're doing. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I think there's maybe a flag-raising ceremony. And I don't know whether it's associated with Tet or, you know, Chinese New Year or what, but if you could get information out to council, I think there's an event up there that people might be interested in attending if they're around. Other comments, questions, scheduling issues? Okay. Oh, we're going to do that?
Yeah, we could, it'll be very brief.
All right, let's go ahead and do that. Let's go into closed session, if you don't mind.